Good morning and welcome to the July 6, 2017 zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on this agenda, there are speaker request forms on the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we would also like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so that the meeting is not disrupted. The public hearing on item one is open. Approval of June 22, 2017 zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes. Karen made the motion to approve the minutes. And Mike seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. My name is Natalie Knutson. I live at 3407 East Anaconda Road.
Thank you. Please proceed with anything you'd like to...
Morning to make the upstairs of the garage living space. I recently moved in after my mom passed and my dad went to assisted living. And the upstairs of the garage is completely wasted space. I wanted to make perhaps a game room, a TV room, and space where family could come and stay. Currently, my mom's side of the family has ten siblings, as does my dad's, and whenever we gather, they have to stay in hotels, so this would help for them to be able to stay and spend time and have a game room, a TV room, and a place where they could stay where they're in town. I'm thinking about a craft room up there, but there's really nothing to do with that entire upstairs of the basement right now, except a big junk room. My dad added that garage, I believe, in 1990 or closed. And he did have professional builders come in. I didn't, and I'm sure he didn't realize that they were building too close to the property line. I didn't know anything about it until we started this process, but I don't know what else to do with the upstairs of the garage. And I hate for it just to sit there and have no purpose, when it could be used for family and friends to stay and other hobby rooms, et cetera.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have a question, but I guess I, I'm looking at this property in connection with the surrounding properties, and that garage is obviously a very large garage, and I don't know that it necessarily fits in with the rest of the area, but that's not part of this issue. Right now, I believe you can use that garage and clean it up and still use it as a craft room and have a place up there that is connected to your house without an actual connection. I don't know that a breezeway is going to change that. I mean, I understand that it'd be easier for you to walk, you know, from house to the garage if it was covered, but I think there's still reasonable use of that garage without that breezeway. So, in good conscience, I don't know that I can approve a variance that would make it more on compliance, I guess is the right word.
Okay, so you're telling me that without a breezeway, I could still turn that into a place where family could stay and a craft room could be built, and I could put running water and so forth up there, and that would be in compliance?
Perhaps we could have Vicki chime in on this.
So, in order to get a building permit to do that, she would still need a variance today to reduce the side yard setback for an accessory structure from five foot to four feet. And then, as a part of that, she could convert that part of the garage to a use that's accessory to the residence, including those that she mentioned today. But she still would need a variance of sort. Since she advertised from twelve foot to four feet, if you grant one from five foot to four feet, that's less, and that's covered under that publication.
Okay, so we could, could change that then and approve...
You could grant a portion of what was requested.
Okay. I, I think that makes more sense. I mean, we're not going to ask her to cut down part of the garage to make it compliant.
Okay, I, I was requesting the breezeway because I, I thought that was the proper way to go about it. But if I can still use that space in compliance with, you know, the city rules, then that would be wonderful. We could, we could manage it without the breezeway.
Good. Sounds like a good compromise.
Vicki?
Yes, so the concern is that this not turn into a commercial property or be used for uses that would create a second residence. So if we're truly talking game rooms and those kinds of activities, but if this were to become bedrooms and bathrooms, then that does become an issue, maybe not even if, for this owner, but future owners, where that could become a guest home, or that could turn into a rental unit. And there is that concern that that use would not be appropriate, but those uses accessory to the residence are allowed. You can have a family room where you have a couch and TV and those kinds of things, but creating a second separate living quarter that could stand alone from the residence would not be allowed.
Can I ask another question?
Please, Karen.
Okay, so in, in the motion, then, do we have to specify that it cannot be that, or that it can only be certain items, or how do you want me to...
I, I think Fletcher's given you your stipulation that if you find that the variance should be granted from five feet to four feet for the existing structure, that the second floor of the garage shall not be converted into a second dwelling or used for commercial purposes.
Okay, that sounds perfect, and that's my motion, that we grant the variance from five feet to four feet with those other statements that you made.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Karen made the motion, as she just stated, to grant the variance from, to change the required setback from five feet to four feet for a separated structure with the stipulations that it can't become a second dwelling unit or a commercial, for commercial use. Is that...
If the motion maker could list the criteria for granting the variance, and I might add that since this is an existing structure, there would be a hardship entailed in removing a foot of the building, and so you could cite that as your reason.
Okay. Well, since you just said that, that sounds wonderful. I add that to my motion.
That would be hard.
I do have a couple other folks that would like to speak. Tim Billings from the fire department.
Good morning, thank you. I'm not sure that it was captured within the report. I may not have submitted the comment in a timely fashion, but the thing with this type of exception, if it is requested, I would ask that that particular building be fire sprinkler protected, as it is an accessory to the, to the dwelling unit, and it's consistent with other comments that we've made throughout the city on similar situations. So, whether it's attached to the structure or whether it's unattached, since it is being modified and it is already encroaching within that setback, we would ask that that stipulation be added.
We've got a motion on the floor. Is there...
Can I amend?
Is that something that we can put on a variance request?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm going to amend my motion and add that as another stipulation, because I think that makes sense.
So, just to clarify for the applicant, if we could, when, when the applicant comes in for the building permit, to convert the second floor of the garage to a game room or a family room or something of that nature, the contractor that you use will work with the fire department to ensure that a residential fire suppression system is also installed, and Mr. Billings can assist you and your contractor in, in getting the information and how to go about pricing those and making sure that it, it fits within your plans. Okay.
Mike Quasny, does that work with you for a second? Okay, so we still have a motion on the floor, but we added the stipulation that residential fire sprinkler be considered at building permit time. Kurt?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think these stipulations are, you know, needed. My question is, is how can the city enforce, you know, the requirement that this doesn't get used as a second dwelling or a guest house, or, I mean, what prevents you from just doing it?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
So as long as there isn't a kitchen in there, and certainly as a part of a building permit to do all that plumbing, we would, the city would be aware of that. So if it did turn out that it was bedrooms, and let's say this applicant sells the property in the future, and that next owner wasn't here today and wasn't aware of this conversation, typically at that point, once that commercial adventure starts, the neighborhood informs the city when these happen. For that to be a bed and breakfast of, or something of that nature, our current ordinance would require a conditional use permit. There is an ordinance that already addresses that, and so we would encourage them to bring that application forward.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, did you have a comment?
No, that answered my question.
Okay. Thank you. I see no more lights up. We do have a motion on the floor. Any further comments on that motion?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Does, does this mean I can't put a bathroom up there for relatives to use when they come visit?
Again, you can have a bathroom in your garage. It's just the purpose is that you can't create a separate living quarter...
Okay.
... or a commercial venture within that second floor.
All right, I understand.
Thank you. I, again, seeing no more lights, if everybody's good, I think we'll go for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, as we've stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, one no, Commissioner Sullivan, but the motion carries. Then I look for a motion to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment part of this day. Kim makes a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Kurt? All those in favor of adjourning zoning board of adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We will now commence the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for July 6, 2017. Again, if any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to the staff along the left wall. Mark on it, and agenda, excuse me, the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to. And again, if you need to take a cellphone call, please step out to the hallway. Items one through eight have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item three, 17PD030. Item six, 17PD032. Item eight, 17UR012. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to this Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through eight that staff would like removed for separate consideration?
Item number two, please.
Okay. Any items one through eight that the planning commission would like removed? And are there any items one through eight that the audience would like removed for separate consideration? The chair would look for a motion to approve items one and three through eight per staff recommendations.
I'll make that motion.
Kim made the motion. Mike G. seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item two is a preliminary subdivision plan to create 132 residential lots, and this property is located south of Katron Boulevard and east of Mount Rushmore Road. The applicant has requested that this item be continued to your August 10, planning commission meeting. They are continuing conversations with city staff on some of the infrastructure requirements associated with the project, and that would be our recommendation.
That was August 10? Look for a motion to continue to August 10.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Kim made the motion.
Second.
Karen seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
Item number nine is a major amendment to a planned development to expand an on-sale liquor establishment to include an outdoor patio for property located at 3313 East Mall Drive and is the current location of Sickies Garage, a restaurant. Take you through some slides. Property is owned general commercial district with a planned development. Currently developed with a restaurant originally, it was Quaker Steak and Lube, now it's Sickies Garage. Future land use is mixed-use commercial, and East Mall Drive is identified as a principal arterial street. This is a, it's developing commercial and industrial corridor in the city. So here we have the proposed expansion of the on-sale use. It's 3,600 square foot outdoor patio area located on the west side of the building. I believe it's currently in use. Go back to this slide, it's going to be enclosed with a four-foot-high cattle guard around the area as it's being used, and the applicant has indicated that that's two to three times a week, and that the time that it will be used will conclude by 10:00 PM to decrease the amount of noise that's outside in this corridor. Here we have a view of the building, the property adjacent to it is currently void of structural development. You can see Cabela's in the distance. There's some hotels along Interstate 90 to the south of the property. RV sales along north, along East Mall Drive, and tractor supply. And then, this is the, to the east, the current, the location of the expansion of Rice Honda, which is underway. And then the, the two signs, the one for the planned development and for the on-sale conditional use is, are posted on the property, and this gives you an idea of where that fenced-off area is adjacent to the building. The applicant has demonstrated that sufficient parking is being provided on the property for the restaurant and for the patio when it is being used and expanding the on-sale use. For these reasons, staff is recommending that the major amendment to the planned development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. If there are any questions for staff, we can take those at this time, otherwise the representative of the applicant is available for any questions.
I don't see any questions up... Oh, Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vicki, is, is that cattle guard kind of gate, is that considered enough for a liquor establishment to have as a barrier?
Actually, it is. It's probably better than what we usually have on some of these, where this will be a more durable substance. Some of these just use the stanchions so that there is that physical visual separation. The benefit with the way they've laid this one out is that entrance to the patio is from the interior of the building and not from the parking lot, so that gives us the separation that we need to ensure that someone isn't going to leave the patio area with the drink in hand...
Right.
... and get in a vehicle. Again, this is better than what we usually would see.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Kurt?
I, I'm, I'm in support of this. I, I think that, that business there, you know, when it was Quaker State, had, you know, struggled and, you know, they, you know, for whatever reason, they closed it up, and I think anything they do to, to help bring business in there and, and get that area more developed, hopefully encourage development out there even more, I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. I do, Kim?
Vicki, will the city see this? I guess I'm just wondering about exiting. It looks like it's using an exit for the building already, and if they're enclosing It looks like it's using an exit for the building already and that they're enclosing it. Let's say there was a fire within the building, people are going to exit all of that into this cattle guard area where there's not another exit to continue on. Will the city review this when it comes through? Or is this the final?
This won't require a building permit since there isn't any structural development. But my understanding is the way that these things are placed together, it will be pretty easy to break apart and if there is an emergency that should come up, which is probably one of the compromises with not making it too concrete in nature in case there was a fire and they would have to get out.
To that point, could they not put some kind of a gate feature that would allow? It seems like it'd be pretty easy to have a way to open. I don't know, they do it with a door, so it seems like there'd be something they could do. I'm in the camp where if there is a fire, sure, it'll go down pretty easy, but if people are stampeding, it creates quite a problem in a fire situation. So, I think that there should be a stipulation that there be some kind of an exit if that is an exit for a fire escape. There should be something in there. And I guess maybe we could refer to the Fire Marshal or the Fire Department and see what their thoughts are.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before we go to Tim.
Yeah, Vicki.
The planning commission in the past has stipulated that there not be a gate because those are hard to police. And then, you've got people that may be underage or those that have a drink in hand, they're going to walk out. So, the fact that someone's got to stop and open something up has always been the preference. Certainly, these gates and the way that they're tied together, we wouldn't want a gate that would just swing back and forth. We would want it to be policed at all times so that, again, those instances didn't happen that I mentioned. But if it is the desire of this planning commission that we start reviewing and having them have an opening to the parking lot that is accessible for the public, then certainly we can let the applicants know that when they bring these in.
Isn't there an option, though, to have it be alarmed? I know that they can have, I don't know, they put them on doors. And so, I guess they would know whether or not somebody's going to go. I struggle a little bit with that being a fire exit onto it, as I understand, and maybe that's not the case. As I understood it, there's a fire exit that goes out of the side of that building, so...
Yeah. If I could, Talbot Wazork with Gunderson Palmer, Curry Fernhose, who's the principal and has been working primary planning, is based out of North Dakota. Sickies has six locations and had some conflict, couldn't make it. But one of the, a couple of clarifications I'd make on that, so these aren't permanent structures, they're just basically panels. Those panels lift out, lift into each other, so they're, they don't, they come apart fairly readily. So, I don't see those as a great concern. And the other thing is, there's already an established patio around this where they have pass out gates. They, people enter through the restaurant, but they have these, but they're not alarmed even. So, this is an outside area. So, these wouldn't be a permanent structure where you could, you could place alarms on. Vicki's correct, if you put a gate there, you'd have to have a security guard standing there to control access and entry. Right now, one of the things that planning asked for and liked about this is, the way they've designed this is, you have to enter through the front door and you have to be sat out in the patio area through the bar area so that you just don't have people coming and going where you'd have to have basically security stationed throughout this area.
Thank you. Tim, would you like to chime in?
Sure, I can definitely do that. And I appreciate the catch on that. That's a, that's a good, good comments from the, from the planning commission regarding the aggressing and the safety of that. You know, we definitely would support some type of a gate structure within that. The building is fire sprinkler protected throughout, so it provides us a little additional level of safety that some other businesses may not, may not be, may not have in place. The gate assembly would, I would presume would be very similar to what we see at the firehouse or other establishments. That's the one that comes to mind right offhand is that there is an open gate that you can simply, once you pay your bill, you leave and you walk, walk through that or on the border or any of those others. So, I don't think that's necessarily an unreasonable request. I think what Vicki has identified is that typically in the past, there's not been separations or openings provided in that. But if it is one of, I think there's three primary exits in there. If it is one of the primaries, then that's a good opportunity to, to create an extra opening, but...
I guess I'd like to clarify that my recollection is that these, these would go up three times a week? Is that correct?
A maximum.
During the summer season, I would assume.
Right. And in fact, the only thing they got, they're doing it one night, their plan is to do it one night a week for this summer unless somebody else comes along, wants to do a special event.
And they're essentially enlarging a current patio area-
Yeah.
...that is already fenced in some fashion.
Yeah, so there's an existing patio structure that's, that has, similar to the firehouse, has fencing around it with a pass out gate on it. So, this is basically just would structure off the parking lot area, a portion of the parking lot area for these special events. And, and so, we're not talking permanent structures. That's why the, the panels are, would be basically just go up that afternoon, come down that evening. Nothing's, nothing permanently added to the building, to the structure or attached to the structure for this.
Thank you. Karen?
Yeah, that-
Talbot.
If you want to pull up that picture, that might help. Yes, Karen.
Hi. I have a question as far as, there's already a patio, is it the same location?
Yeah, so if you look, he's illustrating where that patio area is right now, there's a little seating patio right there. This extension then would just, this isn't a permanent construction. What they would do is they would just put the panels around this outside area for these special events. So, it's kind of basically like a ground patio, I guess would be the way you'd refer to it. So, you just take in part of the parking lot and that part of that area, put the panels around that area. It'd allow people to have beer within that area, set up some extra tables when they're doing special events, put a, potentially put a band in there, allow them to do, to just increase that area a little bit. And so, that access, when we talk about that access, you'd come in through the front door- use your pen for a second. You're coming through the front door, which is here, and then you would come through the building and go out through this way. That's how you access the current patio now. You have to go into that area to be sat in this patio area, which is this area here. And that's how you're sat currently. That patio area has a pass out door right, we're not as good with this as you are, right here where you can see the sidewalk come in now for emergency exit purposes.
Okay, so if somebody's in the new area, they can still use that area to access or to exit?
Well, they could come into the patio area or come out and the panels will be around this, that area as shown and as drawn in. But you don't have to go back into the building to exit that area in an emergency situation because you could use the pass out that's existing on the patio now.
Okay, okay. Do you know the other places that, that they have these buildings in other states and other places like North Dakota? Do they have anything similar to what you're requesting?
They do something similar like this in North Dakota. That's why they went to panels, that's what they do in other locations. They, their location in Sioux Falls, they don't, they do something similar like these similar Wednesday night events, but because they're in a shared parking area, they don't take the parking lot, they kind of, they have a little lawn areas, by understanding, they expand out into. So, they do it in both their locations in North Dakota and, like I said, the Sioux Falls one's laid out a little bit differently. If you're familiar, it's over there off of 41st Street and the restaurants that would be north of 31st Street, that whole row of restaurants. So, they can't take the parking area because it's shared parking, so they don't do it in the parking area there.
But they have the same situation as far as exits that if they go through that panel, they'd have to remove the panels?
Yeah, well, you, panels are, you know, panels slot in, so you'd have to pick up the panel and move it, but they don't, if they had put a gate in that panel, they'd have to put security by that and control that entry access point.
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to, to do both, you know, to have some kind of a gate that would go out that would be just an outside gate. But I know cattle panels don't have gates. I mean, they don't normally, you just don't do that. So, and I know cattle gates are fairly heavy, but I don't know if I could lift one up to get out or not, but do you know?
Well, I don't know what your, your lifting ability is.
How strong are you?
You're, you're an incredibly strong woman, I've always thought that, so I'm going to go with yes.
Oh, thanks, Talbot. Okay, that's enough questions for now.
Mike?
So, the existing patio, there is a gated spot and this ties into it, so what, do I underst-
Right, because you'll have to, in fact, there's the one front spot and there's a side spot because that's how they're going to access into that area. So, if you come through the building, it's the same layout as when it was Quaker State, is my understanding. You come through the front of the door, you go to the left, the barriers to the left, you go through the barrier, that little wraparound L-shaped patio exists. It's got fences like, again, like the firehouse does, you know, one of the gating fenced area, it stands about this tall with the same type of pass out gate that you can push against and walk out.
So, they would not have to go back into the building that might be on fire in order to get out of that area?
They do not have to go back through the building in an emergency situation. Same if, if people are just sitting on the patio now would not have to go back through the building if there is an emergency situation.
Okay. There have been in larger communities than ours where fires have broke out and people have been stampeded and it's just something that we should consider at any time that we, so...
That's good. Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the commission? I don't have any more lights up. We kind of brought you into this, Talbot, but you had a speaker request form. Do you have anything else you'd-
No, I, well, I'm available for questions on it and don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other lights up, I'd look for a motion. Mike made the motion to approve per staff recommendations. Kurt seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, staff items? All right. Look for a motion to adjourn now. Kim made the motion. Mike seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.